Okay, so this is the folder that I have sent to you now these. This is the manual that has been out for, you know, quite a while that the state put out. I'm just gonna go through down, um, you know, what, what we're all Chihuahua was what we're looking at. Um, and then he, these documents here, the number three on, on through. These are the standards, the particular standards that the state um dictates. The knowledge and the skills that a teacher must have in order to be competent in this um content area. So there are art standards, math standards, P E standards, E L A R standards, health, science, music, social studies, theater, which is, you know, the theater and the, the arts. You also have the teaks. You know, first grade, second grade, teaks, third grade, and they'll have all of them. They'll have the teaks for art. The teaks for math, music, theater, and the exam itself. Um Liz is both the your standards document. So what knowledge and skills you need to have and the teaks? The knowledge and skills that the student have. That's where the exam comes from. And so when we begin our studying, it's very important for us to become familiar with each of these individual exams. And so today we're going to take a look at the mathematics portion of it. Each of them have their standards. And the standards document dictates what we need to know and what we need to be able to do in the classroom. What skills and knowledge we need to be able to apply into pedagogy in our classroom via mathematics? And they're broken down. And this, this, these standards along with the teaks for mathematics from early child E C through six. Are, are what the test maker Pearson uses to make your competencies. So it's really important that we understand where these competencies come from and a more sort of in-depth. Collection of the particular knowledge and skills that you need to have are, are contained in these standards documents. So what I would do is print out each of these and do a close reading with each of them. And that and a close reading, um, it's a reading strategy where you annotate the text. You have a dialogue with the text. You talk to it. Do I know what this means? I'm gonna put it in my own words. It is a strategy in metacognition. Um, which is thinking about your thinking, which we do with our own students. And that allows us to reflect back on our understanding, on our comprehension. Did I in fact comprehend this? And if I did, I should be able to say it in my own words. And or provide an example or make some sort of comment about it. And so that's what I would like for you to do when I say engage or dialogue with the standards or annotate your text. So a close reading is where you um old school, you know, printed out. I mean, some people still they, they use um. You know, they prefer doing things online and they'll use like Adobe or something else like. And that's fine. I don't care. It's just me personally, I prefer a paper document where I'm gonna like write on it. My, my standards document, the one that I printed out, and this was like a really long time ago. Um, and I don't even know if I printed out because we didn't have the internet like what we have it now in schools. They just, it wasn't, it wasn't it. Um, but in any event, I remember my standards, having my standards document somehow either given to me by my E P P or, or the campus. And I just like highlighted and wrote all sorts of things and ideas. And um, somebody told me something I heard somewhere. I would write it down in there and it's sort of the Bible. And E C through six, because it is so manifold and, and uh. Um, has all these different content areas, has more than one document, so it is a little bit more work. Um, but it, it, it's not at the upper levels or the upper echelon of difficulty as far as thinking is concerned. You're not gonna have to get into like calculus or anything like that. You're gonna have to know how to um provide the foundational building blocks for the goals that the state has in mathematics. And we're gonna look at what those goals are right now, just so I can correlate it with you really quickly. And that was the wrong link, so let me try this again. Okay, so we'll take a look at math here on the web. And this is the way that um. Wait, not that. This is the way that it's been. On here since forever, like it's difficult, although for some reason I think I have these um. An example of one where it has all the teaks all together, but most teaks you can't just get a PDF of it. They're only available by viewing them live on the web. And they've been that way since I'm saying in the, I started teaching in two thousand and four and they were um. They've been on, on, on the internet in some form like this in just a very rudimentary. Can't get a document that you could put some, some districts have typed them all out nicely. Each of these content areas has an overarching goal that the state has. That they want all Texas students to walk away from that, that class with um. And so the, this is for math and it's gonna remain constant. It is the overarching goal for mathematics instruction in all of Texas. And so it's really important that you understand the overarching goals. So you can understand the different blocks that you are supposed to be building or the different areas, I should say. Um, bu- building those foundational concepts. Um, the desire to achieve educational excellence is the driving force behind the Texas essential knowledge and skills for mathematics. We're trying to achieve educational excellence guided by college and career readiness standards. By embedding statistics, so beginning E C through sticks through six, getting them to prepare building blocks, statistics, probability and finance while focusing on computational thinking, mathematical fluency and solid understanding. Texas will lead the way in mathematics education and prepare all students for challenges they will face in the twenty first century. And it's true, students that have strong math and reading skills are unstoppable. And, and you know, math is, is essentially just another language. Uh, when you think about it, math is the universal language. Math is the same in China, in Germany, in Mexico, in India. It is literally the universal language. It has grammar. It has these formulas. So there's reason and logic to it. And when we, we get students to become unafraid of mathematics and just understand that it's like anyone can acquire it. It's like language. It's like the, the analytical, the numerical equivalent to what language is for us. And everybody has language, you know, unless you have some sort of disability. So there is no one who cannot be good at math. You might have had a very unfortunate experience and maybe your teacher was weak themselves and therefore did not provide the appropriate instruction. But, but is there's this unlocking that happens once a student sort of um lets go of that fear. And if that fear never begins, even better. And that's where E C through six sort of math teachers, really their, their M V Ps as far as mathematics early on. Okay, so let's go on. So the process standards describe ways in which students are expected to engage in the content. The placement of the process standards at the beginning of the knowledge and skills listed for each grade and course is intentional. This is important. They're telling you the process through which you have to teach. They're asking you to do this. Process standards describe ways in which students are expected to engage. We expect them to do and engage in these ways. And so this is intentional. The process standards weave the other knowledge and skills together so that the students may be successful problem solvers and use mathematics efficiently and effectively in their daily lives. The process standards are integrated at every grade level and course. When possible, students will apply mathematics to problems arising in everyday life, society and the workplace. And that's something they will highly test you on. So they want for you, and this is true in all content, all of the subject areas. You know, so this is true for mathematics, for reading, for science, but we can making connections. Like, how does this connect to the real world? And it's, and it's true even for what I was saying about how every teacher, no matter how well they studied about pedagogy. It is not until you make real world connections and you see what happens when Maslow's hierarchy of needs is not being met. As far as academic achievement is concerned, it's different. And you have to have that real world experience to say, oh, my goodness. Okay, so now let me do all of these other things to sort of circumvent this eventuality that will happen if, if this is going on. So connection to real world, everyday, you know, life, society, um, they're just every activity and especially math, you know, math teachers could, can give a point of extra credit every time a student comes in and, and tells them how they use math, you know, in the previous, not math or numbers. It in outside of school, you know, how if your mom was doing math or paying the bills or somebody was measuring or whatever. Bring me an example of how numbers were used today in your life and you get a point. Just so they can continue to always look for connections, because that is really important. Students will use a problem solving model that incorporates. Um, excuse me, last night, Tranza analyzing given information, formulating a plan or strategy, determining a solution, justifying the solution and evaluating the problem solving process and reasonableness of the solution. So sort of marrying the idea of math and science together. Because we know as adults that math and science go hand in hand. You can't have science without math. Math is you, I mean, uh, math is the, a tool by which we, we use or are able to function in science. So getting them to see these overlapping um connections between their, the things that they're studying, very, very important. Students will um select appropriate tools such as real objects, manipulatives, algorithms, paper and pencil, technology and techniques such as mental math, estimation, number sense and generalization and abstraction to solve problems. So each of these um techniques, mental math, estimation, number sense, generalization and abstractions in order to solve problems, you need to be able to in a conversational way explain to someone what mental math is like. Mental math is when you work out a math problem in your head. You don't have to write it down. And so depending on how much you practice and it's really like a practice makes perfect. The more things that you remember offhand, multiplication tables, the more you are able to um engage in mental math. So it's a thing you must practice in. That's an example of somebody talking about it. And, and you being able to feel like, okay, I'm um knowledgeable, these other things. Using tools, real objects, using real objects in order to help them learn math concepts. For instance, bringing in pizza, right? And, and, and having the kids slice it or are bringing it an unsliced pizza. And you slicing it up and say, okay, guys, there's twenty of us here. Here I go. I'm gonna make one big cut down the center of it. Ha, is that okay? Are we, do we have enough slices for everyone? Oh, okay. So we had a hole and now how much of the hole do we have? We, we have two slices. I mean, there's twenty of us. We need more. Okay, well, we need, let's do more. Let's do one more cover. And so you cut it again and now it's four and ask the kids again. Okay, well, do we have enough now? Well, we have enough. Then let's estimate. Do you think we're gonna have enough? And well, yeah, we can have enough, but the pieces will be small. So you have these like really broad sort of ideas about um fractions and um, you know, even dividing and, but if it's with a real object, for some reason that math scariness a sort of evaporates and they're able to just understand and correlate that math concept easier. Um, there are also a lot of manipulatives. And um, I have a video in my math four through eight playlist. And it's got some really great videos on using manipulatives in elementary. Really, there are so many awesome manipulatives and like I didn't use that many growing up when I was little in, in elementary. And we had some, I remember using the, you know, the, the ones with that you do um place value or whatever, like the tens, the ones, the hundreds, and then you lay them on top of each other to layer them. Um, I, we had those. But there are so many more new math manipulatives that are amazing tools for students to understand concepts. And, and not only does it help illustrate it visually for them, but many of them are like tactile things that they use in their hands. And so there's just so many benefits beyond just, you know, paper and pencil. Um, and, and those type of more basic techniques. Um, so the reason I'm going through this very sort of slowly with you is this, you are gonna have to read through this and do a close reading like I, like I said of, of your standards when we were talking about um. Your, your standards, like for instance, number, number concepts. Here's the overarching standard here and uh the mathematics teacher understands and uses numbers, the numbers system and their structure, operations and algorithms, quantitative reasoning and technology appropriate to teach the statewide curriculum. And that's what we were just looking at. So you see all of the statewide curriculum was just put in there just with that little phrase. That tiny little phrase connected all of this E C kindergarten through sixth grade. Um, in there. So it's really important. And do you have to be a master and know all of this on the day you take your exam? No, but you need to be um familiar with the concepts, the, the main processes that they'll ask you for and you know what those main ones are because they list them for you in, in the competencies. And then the way in which the students are supposed to be doing the different skills, layering their knowledge. So we'll continue with this.
Do you have a video of this? Like, um, just, I know you're going over all this right now, but I need to like replay replay to learn it. Do you have a video of this or, or it's just what you teach now?
Well, I have um one, but it, but I have several, but there are different content area. Like we went, I have one and I think it's for E L A R. Um, but for the E C through six portion where we go through some questions and we take a look at it. But um, I'm also going to have another um session tomorrow. But it's a, it's a student. Let me check. It's one on one, but I, you can pop in. Let me see. But it's because it's all so E C through six.
Yeah, I don't mind. I mean, even if you charge me, I don't care. I just wanna be as prepared as I can be when I take this test to get that. That's my goal, my mindset and I.
Yeah. Absolutely. Okay. Okay, so tomorrow at one to one thirty.
Okay, one to one thirty. Okay.
Yeah, I just, you'll use the same, you'll use the same link. Um. So it tells you all the different things that students need to have, be able to do. Students will effectively communicate mathematical ideas. That means that in some of the scenarios, they'll give you a choice where it tells you like, what is the best way for the teacher to help the student understand ideas, mathematical ideas. And one of the examples might be to have them do a think pair share after they, you know, finish answering poignant questions. We, we want them to not only learn mathematical vocabulary and concepts and ideas, but we want them to talk about it. So that means you have to ask them poignant questions, give them time to think about it and say, hey, turn to your partner and tell them what, what you responded. And, and think pair share is a really great activity to get the students to, to sort of assess themselves, to practice before we actually do assessment and, and go to like a whole group discussion and ask the same question again. Um, but and it, and it allows them to uh mediate their understanding. So if I am doing a think pair share with you and I tell you, yeah, well, I think the moon is made out of cheese. Because like my grandma read me the story and so I'm fairly certain that the moon is made out of cheese. And you're like, well, I think that that is actually something called like a tall tale or something and an exaggeration of the truth. And so you would be illuminated and then I would say, okay. And so you were telling me, actually, it's a, it's one of our satellites and it's a moon and it's made out of rocks and carbon or whatever. Um, and so now I know and you have just mediated knowledge for me in a way that doesn't make me ashamed because you're my peer and I turned to talk to you on purpose. I turned to talk to you, think pair share. So it's like this, no pressure, no risk, and it allows the students, especially if you write the questions, you know, the questions that you're posing to them are, are poignant and meaningful. You'll, you'll craft it in a way where they have to sort of use the vocabulary um that they're, that they're saying, right? Uh, you know, like, oh, that it's made from carbon or, or the algorithm this, whatever the case may be. You want them to sort of be using that academic specific vocabulary, be communicating and parroting ideas that they might have, you know, learned during direct instruction or during their own um independent practice. And when you do these think pair shares or these find somebody who's and you give them time to practice speaking about these ideas, sort of fleshing out their ideas, testing them with their peers and gathering, sort of editing their thinking. Um, if you go back and you ask the same questions or even a little bit more challenging of a question to the whole group, you are going to get more kids wanting to engage because they already had this conversation with somebody and they're ready to give you the right answer. Because most kids wanna do that. They want to be engaged. They wanna give the right answer. If they're not engaged, it's because it's too hard or too easy or they're confused. And nobody likes to not feel smart, you know? If you feel smart in something like I'm learning and I understand this, you're gonna wanna talk about it. It's human nature. And kids are like that naturally. And so um getting them to practice about it, getting them not to be, you know, afraid. Uh, reasoning, their, their implement, uh implications, using multiple representations. So getting the kids to understand the, the sim, the number, number symbol and that symbols can be, not symbols, numbers like also are written, right? So it's not just the number one. There's the word one. There's like um Roman numerals one. There's all sorts of different, there's a one representative in a graphic, you know, like in, in a graph, you could say like this thing represents one. So there's many ways to um and getting the students to, to understand that idea of numbers, that number sense and um and how it's represented and sort of changes and gets more complex. Students use mathematical relationships to generate solutions. So they, they begin to use the, the, their understanding of number concepts. Their understanding of processes, general solutions, adding, subtracting, multiplying, divisions to begin to make connections and predictions. Um, students will analyze mathematical relationships to connect and communicate mathematical ideas. Students will display, explain and justify mathematical arguments. Um, use precise mathematical language in written and oral communication. So that's really important. Again, we want every single content area, whether it's science, social studies, math, E L A R, to be writing and to be speaking using content specific vocabulary, which we have direct instruction using, um, you know, uh, the. I can't think of what, I don't know why it left my brain. But anyway, certainly using um to the Frayer model, using visuals, making sure you're differentiating for instruction. But like all content specific vocabulary needs to be direct instructed when it's introduced and then reviewed and used between them and them forced to be used, asking questions and having them write them down. So this is something that I always suggest. Ask them a question, have them write down their answer to the question, even if it's math class, right? And then have them turn to their partner and think pair share. And then we're gonna hold class again and I'm gonna ask people and there's gonna be, I mean, eighty nine percent of them are gonna be raising their hands to answer the question. And that's what we want for our students. So um, do you have to go? I'm just checking on time with you.
No, it's up to you. Like, well, I don't want, I don't wanna overexert you because anyways, I'm gonna join you tomorrow. I, I think we can do till eleven for you. So that way.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, well, do eleven and tomorrow I'll recontinue. Don't worry. I'm not in a hurry. Like I, I'm gonna eat right now and then I'm gonna go to my appointment, but I can just join in tomorrow. No, 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 I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this. So like for math, the Frayer model, I need to re, you see that I, I saw it somewheres. I'm not too sure. I think it was one of the answer choices, but yes, oh, my God, this is.
The prior model is the only model, the only thing that I use. And I, I, as I'm telling you, I'm as an English teacher, so I used it every day. We did vocabulary all the time. I wanted my students to leave with, you know, a, a vast increase in there. So I'm gonna draw a Frayer model. So here is like, say, like the box or. And uh, sometimes I have the students like for extra credit, they can bring me, make a nice like half sized poster for a model. And so you have the word here. The word or concept is here. And this can be um like, some people put it in a square here. And then uh, the definition is here. A visual or video. Like a picture, clip art or a link to a video. Um. Synonyms. What is it? The same? What is it like? Antonyms. What is it not like at all? What is the opposite of it? What is the same? What is opposite? And we're going to have the students write the definition in their own words. So this is the dictionary definition, the denotation, and this is in my own words. What does this word mean? Sometimes people put the, the, what does this word mean, their own definition up here? So they have the dictionary definition, the denotation, and then they have their own, the own. And then here, they have the student use it in a sentence. But I like the dictionary definition and then my own definition. Because uh, in the beginning of the week, I would have the word of the week. And then we would have all sorts of other different vocabulary words, but the word of the week, they had to write a sentence with every day. And underneath it, like on Monday, this would be their sentence using the word of the week. On Tuesday, and this would be their sentence using the word of the week.
I see. And, and you stick to one word per week, right?
Yeah, well, yes, for the word of the week, yes, but like if we did a unit or we were studying something else, like there would be other vocabulary words that we would look up. But as far as like every day, uh, when they came in, this was part of their bell ringer, like the word of the week that we reviewed all the time. Like the word simultaneously, you know, just be a uh, or. Um, harbinger, I mean, just there, I, I think that we got the words from a uh like S A T list and uh, those would be the words of the week. But for instance, if I was going to start a lesson on uh, maybe mythology. So I might have to review vocabulary for many things that are particular to the study of mythology. In which case it would be different and we do a whole, but you know, we do a whole bunch of dissecting and going over vocabulary before we endeavor in that. Because the more words they know from the unit or the lesson, the better they are, they are going to be able to comprehend. They'll understand the lesson more if they have a better preview. Think of like a trailer to a movie. You would never go watch a movie you've never seen a trailer for just based on a title. It's sort of silly to even think. You have to have a picture of it in your head. You don't wanna go in there and, I mean, you could. It, it's totally possible. It's not like your brain would explode, but you don't want to. Your brain works better when you decide and this is what I see and I understand it. And now I'm gonna go watch and see if it's what I understand. Learning is much in the same way. And so when the students have an understanding of what they're gonna be doing for the day um, or what they're gonna be doing in this lesson, these are the words and concepts we're gonna be going over. That is something that we do in um, you know, sheltered instruction where uh, it's sort of like a a lesson preview or um, a unit trailer or guide beforehand and it highlights like the goals that y'all are gonna have, the skills that you're gonna do. And since the teaks are your driving, you know, force for objectives. It is um important, which is why they add them for you to understand these. So let me see, for students to become fluent in math, students must develop robust. So let me see. For students to become fluent in math, students must develop robust sense of number. Number sense is so important. Number sense, in order for them to be good at math. Number sense, number systems, structure, number sense, so very important for students. Research says it and the state put it into law. The teaks are a part of our law. So.
Is that like the number line? Is that like the number line where I was reading the practice questions on the two forty and it says like when they're adding and subtracting, the key is a number line plus manipulatives. Would that be it or no?
That is part of number sense, yes. So the National Research Council report, adding it up defines procedural fluency as skills in carrying out procedures, flexibility, accurately, efficiently and appropriately. As students develop procedural fluency, they also uh, they must also realize that true problem solving may take time, effort and perseverance. Students in kindergarten are expected to perform their work without the use of uh calculators. So yes, the, the thing is, is that we know calculators are available everywhere. Could we allow kindergartners to become phenoms at calculators and just use it? Yeah, maybe. But then they might not be able to in their head math sense, do like ten minus seven or something, you know? We, they, they need to have a robust, I know ten, what ten minus seven is really quickly. My brain doesn't have to do any math. It's like it already has that product, that number sense uh for that equation. It's like, you know, automatic for me. We need the students to build a robust, a large, a healthy number sense where they can sense out numbers and their fluency in math via addition, via uh subtraction, uh multiplication and division. Because essentially those are the basic, those are the basic processes, right, of math? And everything else is just like a complex movement or, you know what I mean? Like um hybrid of addition, multiplication, you know what I'm saying? Like it's all, having the students be able to have flexibility, accurately, efficiently and appropriately use addition, math, multiplication and division. It will help them in the long run when they get to those complex ones. Because we know that, you know, two hundred and fifty-six minus two hundred and thirty-seven, they can take the time to punch it in or their brains could be, you know, fast enough to say, oh, it's nine points. It's like nine off or whatever and just do it. They have to have that automaticity, that automatic number sense and it, and it doesn't happen overnight, but it happens through practice and using what you, you identified as a strategy, right? So if they have, you know, ten minus seven, have the number line and have them shade it, you know? A shade to minus seven, we're gonna take away seven, gonna shade, 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 shade to seven. Now how many are left? Three. Okay. Those things and that multiple doing of that creates automaticity.
Um, right.
So it shows you the different areas. The primary focal area in kindergarten are understanding counting and cardinality, understanding addition as joining and subtraction as separating and comparing objects by measurable attributes. So that is primary focus for kindergarten. It's what we do. We don't want them to be um, and that's important because when they ask you on the exam like, oh, um, you know, Ms. Fariah is teaching a kindergarten class. Which of the following would be the most appropriate activity for her to do with her kindergartners for this math assignment? And they're talking about, you know, shading or not shading um using this very complex manipulator, something complex, you know, and you know, okay, we're trying to get them to count well and to understand that when we add, it's joining things together and we subtract, it's separating them, getting less. So that's one of the fundamental, fundamentally, the idea of subtraction. The idea and then we'll move on to getting them to do it. We need to understand like what, what is the idea of it? Students develop, develop number and operations through several fundamental concepts. So they develop their number understanding and the oper, the understanding of the operations, which are addition and subtraction. At this point, we're not even adding multiplication or division. That is not even a thing. So if that would have been one of the answer choices, you would be able to say in your brain, oh, that's for sure not the right answer. I can bet myself five dollars. It's not because multiplication is not something that kindergartners should be endeavoring on. We're trying to get them to be um, to have a robust understanding of number sense counting and the, the concepts of subtraction and uh addition. So students know number names and the counting sequence. That is something they have to be able to do before they leave kindergarten. Counting and cardality, card, cardinality, lay a foundation, solid foundations for number. Students apply the principles for counting to make the connection between numbers and quantities. So we have to be able to get them to understand the, the, the number one, right? Like that actual um symbol of a one or the symbol of a two and what like two blocks are or two slices of pizza and the number two. So making those connections between numbers, num, and, and quantities. You, uh, students use the meaning of numbers to create strategies for problem solvings and responding to practical solutions involving again only addition and subtraction. Students identify characteristics of objects that can be measured and directly compare ob, objects according to these measurable attributes. So um, and you can measure, you know, with, with the students in, in any type of way. And later when we, when we meet, maybe tomorrow, I'll show you what I mean by measure with, with anything with at this early age um, because we'll take a look at some of the manipulatives that they use for the students. Um, because there's some really great um EC through six math teachers that, that put the most amazing videos on YouTube. And so I've gathered those and we'll take a look at some of them tomorrow so that you can see what, you know, what sort of things we could do to help the kids be able to do these things.
So I'll look at the stuff for tomorrow and I'll definitely get some things that you have there and I guess we could just finish tomorrow. But thank you. This helps like kind of figure how to look at these, how to read these um standards, right, and stuff. So, okay, well, I think you've pretty much gone through it thorough. And I'll look at the videos that you have either way so I can understand.
Absolutely. And I'll send you the, I will send you um, I'll upload this and I'll send you the link so that you can, you know, re-watch it and then can you on, go through here and make note cards for these overarching ideas. Like we know this one here is the primary focus is for kindergarten is addition and subtraction. They need to know mathematical process standards, sorry. Um, they need to be able to do the number operations and then it shows you and exactly what and up to what. So it's only up to twenty objects. We're, we're not trying to get them to do all crazy count to a thousand. No. I mean, these, this is where we need them to go and the way in which it builds. Algebraic reasoning is one of them. Um, geometry and measurement is one of them. And so the reason I'm telling you this before I leave is because one of the ways I'd like for you to study is to make like a, like a, get one of those big study cards and have one for like number and operations, algebraic reasoning, geometry and measurement. Because each one of these is gonna have things that each grade level builds on. Because you're not gonna do much with algebraic reasoning in kindergarten. But in fourth and fifth and sixth grade, you definitely do because you were preparing them to actually be in pre-algebra, right? So there's more there. There's more um concepts and skills that they are required to learn and be able to do. Therefore, we need to learn and be able to do. So that's how I sort of want for you to, when you go through these, make sure you are categorizing by those overarching sort of processes and mathematical ideas that the state it continues to categorize so that you can chart the difference. Like what's the difference between kindergarten and first grade? As far as these different sections is concerned, what's the difference between?
Like the number five standard, I put it there and then I could probably in the back put examples or what the expectation is, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Oh, now I understand. I do have the cards. So then tomorrow at one, I guess I'll see you. Thank you, Stephanie, and um let me know when your next study session would be, okay?
I certainly will. Thank you so much for your patience with my COVID. I really do apologize.
Uh, not a problem. Don't worry about it. But at least I know how to get started when I'm studying because I didn't know, it's so much that I didn't even know where to start from, you know, like.
I know it is. It's so, it, it's really, it's a daunting task. And, and I, and I applaud every single elementary teacher that I know. Because it's a lot and the amount of knowledge and skills that you guys have to have is sort of, it's really, it's insane and it's sort of awesome. You know, you guys are awesome. So it is a lot, but. Right. They do need to get paid more. Absolutely. I'm gonna vote for Betho in November to make sure that it happens. But you need to um just take it one standard at a time. So start with mathematics and then once you feel comfortable or whichever one, you don't have to start with math. If you wanna start with math, you wanna start with art, cool. Go to art standards and begin with your standards and correlate them to the, the teaks, right? Looking at what is, what do I need to know? What do I need to be able to do? What does the student need to know? What do they need to be able to do?
Okay, sure thing. Then I'll see you tomorrow at one and then we could talk about the next study session or private session that we can do. Okay?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Likewise. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.